Good afternoon, everybody. It's 5 o'clock and I would like to call this meeting to order. If I may, at this point in time, ask for a motion to allow Dr. Kraft to attend our meeting virtually.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. And now if we, if everybody will please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. And if you will now join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger. Ms. Dooley, here. Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever, here. Mr. Morris.
Present.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I will call for approval of our proposed agenda.
In a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Now, we will open this up for comments from members of the community. Anybody here in the media center is welcome to come to the podium. And if there's anybody in, signed up or watching us through Zoom, I would ask that you please state your name, address, and you have three minutes for comment. And I'm not sure if anybody's in, in the Zoom room currently. We'll give it just another minute. This would also be an opportunity, we'll just kind of roll it all into one, if I may, for public comment regarding the budget or anything else. Pardon me? Okay, all right. Yeah, not, maybe not now, but yes. Coming up, okay, so no public comment in general, but now if there's anybody who would like to speak specific to our budget, again, this would be our 2022-2023 budget, this would be an opportunity to provide public comment. All right, thank you. Please keep in mind, if you have questions or comments, you can always email us as well. And we will move right along to an action item. Dr. Odie.
Madam Chair, members of the board, last board meeting, Pat Cuomo, Director of Technology, presented information on the proposed private fiber network project for board information. That was on February 3rd. The item is now being presented for approval.
I move the approval of the private fiber network project.
I second. Are there any questions, board members? I quickly, I did have a couple of questions in that last, if Ms. Powell, if you mind coming up to the podium, please. And she may provide some other information, but I had specifically asked if it was possible to, to push into some of our other neighborhoods beyond what, what we would be doing with our network.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Odie. Pat Cuomo provided, has prepared some additional information for you all in response to the questions that were asked at the previous meeting. So the first question was, is there the possibility of improving home accessibility for our community? And the answer is absolutely yes. It is possible to expand or build this type of network into our neighborhoods where internet access might be needed for students and families. Additional comments from one of the vendors who are, would be likely proposing on this procurement is that they are using a similar strategy in Phoenix, where they used E-Rate and the school, and the school district to lay the backbone for the network. Now they are building out to the city, county, and homes within the area. Of course, these additional sites are on separate strands of fiber in order to keep the district on their own private network as possible. So there can't, there wouldn't be a co-mingling, but it's about putting the backbone in place, and then it would largely be up to the city to take advantage of the opportunity from there. They, this, in the case of this particular project in Phoenix, just as an example, they're beginning to have more conversations of this nature in anticipation of new infrastructure bills that were passed recently. So this is what this particular vendor is seeing beyond that project, because with the new infrastructure bill recently passed to fund broadband throughout the nation, there are going to be great opportunities coming down the pipeline for federal dollars to be utilized. And that would be something that would be, you know, those will be opportunities for the city to consider. So from another vendor as an example, taking West Haven as just an example, that serves 100, that has 126 public housing units. The project scale to bring fiber to that many units would be in around .53 miles total, considering the, so considering the number of units and the .53, roughly half a mile total area, the cost for something like that would be in the range of $93,000 to $118,000. So that's an example. If you take just West Haven as an example, and that's just an estimate. But that would be an example of what it would be like to work off of the dish, the school district's backbone if the city wanted to bring service into that particular area. This isn't on here, but I would just say, you know, all of this is based on today's dollars, and who knows where things will go from there. But this does not include the actual internet service, of course. This just gets the service into that locality. The act for the actual internet service beyond the construction, that's a separate cost. So the analogy, building off of an analogy that I think Pat used in the previous presentation, we're building a race, that puts the racetrack in place. There's still the vehicles that would need to be purchased. In other words, once you get that infrastructure built into that neighborhood or any neighborhood. Again, this other vendor highlighted there are currently billions of grant dollars available to bring high-speed connectivity to cities and counties and underserved locations. And underserved locations will take first priority for those dollars. So definitely appreciate Mr. Cuomo, you know, doing that follow-up, just to provide some context for what could be possible. And I think he did a really good job with those additional details and using a particular community as just an example, if you will.
Thank you.
I also might want to add, just before you take your, your vote, you're not only authorizing the procurement to move forward with the private fiber network, but just as a reminder, this would be authorizing use of up to or approximately $280,000 from our federal relief funds. So I just want that to be very transparent for you all and for the public, that it's authorizing the procurement for this construction project to go forward, and also saying that you are okay with using, making that a use of our federal relief dollars.
Thank you. Right, any other questions? Comments? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And exciting. All right, and we are next moving to our budget documents and presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, we have Ms. Kim Powell, our Chief Operations Officer, and she's going to present the FY '23 budget presentation for board discussion. Ms. Powell?
Thank you, Dr. Odie. So we won't, I keep looking up there like there's slides that are going to appear. I'm going to wait for a moment for Ms. Thacker to share the presentation. So there really isn't new material in this presentation. Things have been pretty consistent throughout our, our journey together, our path forward, if you will, that we've been laying ever since the workshop, the work session on January 15th. Our budget priorities and our focus areas have not changed. Reconfiguration is still a top priority, along with our focus on student programs and staff compensation and benefits. We, we truly are people business, and these things go hand in hand with our strategic plan for safe and supportive schools, academic excellence, and organizational supports. Oh, are you advancing or me, Liz? Okay, I think we may have. Okay, so this is the graphic that we've been using to sort of illustrate our process this year and the situation that, that we, along with many other school division, divisions have with working ahead, addressing the challenges, while at the same time reducing our dependency on non-recurring funds for recurring expenses. So right now, our current budget has a little over 4.5, close to four, $5 million in CARES money, if you will, for recurring expenditures. And so the way we have to address this moving forward or cool off this budget is we have to increase revenue from recurring sources in combination with decreasing expenditures. And the board, working with staff, has really made great strides in, in doing this. So now we look at our budget change documents. This is the format we use every year to detail the changes in our budget. It steps the public and anyone else who wants to look at it through exactly what the proposed changes are, both with regard to increases and decreases. The first section is always devoted to our salary and benefit actions. This budget proposes an average increase of 5% for all staff, and that is step plus in order to receive that average increase of 5%. So it involves getting the step plus, in the case of teachers and administrative staff, 3.75% for support staff, which are your custodians, nutrition workers, IAs, and certain office support staff. It's a 4% increase on top of step, because the steps are only about 1% in separation, as opposed to the one and a quarter on the other scales. This, this action also includes addressing our health insurance increase and a small increase in our employee assistance program. Next, we move into our recurring and non-discretionary contracts. We actually put forth some recommended decreases in certain areas, and those are detailed here with the negative numbers. The biggest increases are with our city contracts for people transportation and maintenance. There is also a small increase of $15,000 to address the budget line we use to pay annual stormwater tax fees that are assessed to the schools from the city. But you can also see where, you know, the technology team came forward with a more cost-effective option to do the technology audits. You can see where we reviewed all of our software subscriptions, and a lot of those subscriptions go up, but we were also able to identify programs and areas where we could make reductions. So the net increase was only $33,000, and I won't take you line by line through these items, because we've been through them in many previous presentations. The only increases that are being put forward in this budget beyond the salary and benefit actions that are needed are a small stipend for CHS theater assistance to bring that in line with, like, the way we handle assistant coaches in sports. There are people who are working with the theater program, and we wanted to address the, the support that those folks have been giving. And then we have speech pathologists and psychologists who are serving as leads for their area in the division, but they weren't getting the lead, they weren't getting stipended as leads. And so that is also shown as being addressed here. I also want to mention on the salary action, which is obviously the most significant cost driver, the 5% is in line with, with what is currently proposed in the state budget for salary action for all SOQ-funded positions, which means it touches every category of position, not just teachers, but also guidance counselors and principals and every type of position basically that you have in the school division. So in order to get the funds from the state that would go towards helping with any type of salary action, Renee Hoover and Finance Department, I at some point have to certify that the action that we took is in line with the proposed action in the state budget in order to be eligible to receive any funding from the state towards any salary action. That's how that works. So that's where that 5% is. That's a big factor behind that 5% number. So the reduction section in this year's proposed budget is significant. There's, it's been a lot of work looking at our current vacancies and possible reorganizations, and I won't detail that here, but it's the equivalent of 17 FTEs and a proposed savings of over $850,000. The other, the next three items were things that were needed during the height of the pandemic to support virtual instruction or students learning from home. We sent a lot of books home. We don't have to keep refreshing the book room. We've done one refresh. We can, we can slow that down. And then we did a lot with internet communications and connectivity during the height of the pandemic with hotspots and things like that. But some of those things we could, did not need to be recurring expenses. So those reductions are all reflected here, and it's close to $1 million in proposed reductions, and the team worked really hard to bring that forward. And then, last but not least, flipping to the revenue side of the budget. Based on Governor, Governor Northram's budget proposal back in December, Charlottesville would be looking at an increase of 1.7, almost $1.8 million in state revenue, and that certainly helps our thermometer situation. And so when you take everything that's put together on the expense side, the proposed salary action, which is in line with the state action, our health insurance cost increase, which we didn't have any cost increase last year, this year we do, and medical inflation has not stopped. That's a huge factor in that cost alone. The contract changes, all of it, you take all of that together, you take the state increase, and then what that leaves is an estimated increase for the city that's based largely on two things. It's based on the formula allocation increase, which is 40% of new personal property, real estate tax, property taxes. So the 40% number is $3,337,820, based on the latest estimate that we received from our colleagues at the city. If you take that number and you add to it just the increases for the city contracts, which are, which is money that the city allocates us, to us, but then we send that money back to them to pay for these services, you take those numbers, put them together, and it results in a city request of $4,216,341, so a little over 4.2 million. And again, the basis of that 4.2 million dollar ask is the formula allocation baseline, if you will, and then just the increases in the city's contracts that they have with us. And if we do these things, if all of this pans out the way we are proposing that it should, that we estimate it should, then we would actually be able to decrease our dependency on the non-recurring funds by over 2.4, almost $2.5 million, almost cutting that in half, taking that thermometer down by half. And by way of reminder, we only have one more budget cycle to work out this thermometer issue with non-recurring funds. So to make 50% progress in this year seems about right, because that still leaves us with half the hill to climb next year. So this is the same slide that you saw at your last meeting when we were talking about this budget proposal. And this time I added some, some additional flags, if you will, to highlight some things that I didn't highlight when we looked at this last time. The increase in the general operating fund of 3.9 million, it's 3.5 million. You can see this down there in the bottom where the star is. The increase is 3.5 million in the actual operating budget, and then every year, whatever our residual balance is, once the audit and everything happens from the prior year, that money goes to what we call fund balance. And so the, there's $387,251 that's actually just recognizing the adjustment in fund balance from the previous year's audit. So I didn't highlight that the last time I was at the podium talking about the budget, but I wanted to draw your attention to that at the bottom of the slide there. When you look at the special revenue funds, and I'll be honest, normally, in a normal, in normal times, in a normal budget year, the special revenues line, or the special revenues fund is not where the action is. It's not the most exciting part of the budget discussions. All of that has changed with CARES and ARPA money. And so what I really want to highlight there is 8.5, almost $8.6 million increase in special revenues funds. That's, that's big, that's huge, but that's really all around the, the ARPA money is the main driver of that. And so our Finance Director Renee Hoover did a great job, I thought, of really detailing what's behind that significant increase, so that anyone looking at this presentation or the public can understand why that big jump. A lot of what's going on here to go from a proposed budget of $94.3 million to over 106 million, you know, crossing that threshold into a budget that's over 100 million, a lot of that's being driven by this one-time money that we have at this time that we have to reflect in our budget. So I just wanted to draw your attention to those helpful tables at the bottom that explain the changes. So as I alluded to earlier, assuming all goes as proposed, we, we cut the thermometer roughly in half in one year. And there would be more work to be done in the next budget cycle, but I think this represents a great, a great effort, a solid plan, to quote Dr. Gurley, a path forward, a reasonable path forward. So the table to the right just shows, it summarizes our overall picture with where we are with the non-recurring funding. You can see that the total of the three major awards has been over 15.7 million. We used a little over 336,000 last year. The current adopted budget has that 4.5, almost 4.6 million in it from the original adopted budget. And then this current proposal is suggesting that we allow for over, a little over 2.1 million to be used in next year's budget for FY 2023. And that would leave about 8.7 million still to be used for the FY '24 budget in operations, or preferably steering that money into more non-recurring expenditures in a way that is most impactful for the community. So with that, a friendly reminder of where we are in this process. We had the, you know, this budget work session is on the calendar in part, because if there were any significant signals of changes that would need to be made based, you know, on what we were hearing from city leadership, this work session would be critical for working those things out before you all are scheduled to adopt a budget on, on February 24th. It appears that we are not, you know, we, we haven't received any indications from the city that they have issues with our budget proposal. There could be some tiny technical adjustments perhaps between now and then, but nothing of any significance for us to sort out or for the board to sort out this evening. Then the board will be presenting the budget to council officially on March the 7th, and the council is scheduled to adopt the budget and, and the tax rate on April 12th, mid-April. So that is the last slide in the, in the deck, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Start with comments or questions? I don't know. Dr. Kraft, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I don't at this time. I feel very confident and solid about the work that's been done on this budget and very ready to move forward with this and approve it. So nothing at this time. And I appreciate all the work that's been, that's gone into this to date.
Thank you. Ms. Dooley, any questions? Mr. Morris? Mr. Bryant? Ms. McKeever?
I actually just wanted to emphasize the one thing that was on, like, one of the first slides. The health insurance increase is $818,000. And I just want to make that special note that that's health insurance is almost a million-dollar additional cost over last year, which is just a crazy amount of increase that we have literally no control over. Well, virtually no control over. We do our best to make the, to, to make the benefits the same and minimize the cost increases, but this is a dramatic increase, and especially when you're looking at our thermometer. You're like, okay, this cannot increase again another million dollars next year. And I just, that's a very significant point, I think. So, but I also wanted to just clarify, can we approve this, this today? Like, we're having a meeting at the end of the month. It seems very redundant. I just want to, like, I just don't, this is supposed to be a work session, but it's very much like a school board, I'm meeting, and so that's why I just want to ask that, like, are we required to have?
I, I'm not sure about the noticing. I would be concerned about the noticing if we take, if action were taken today. I know it feels like, because this year it has been relatively smooth as far as we've conveyed information to the city, and there hasn't been pushback or, or significant counters with regard to what's being proposed for operations. But, and if I may, just regarding the health insurance, there are very minor adjustments that we are looking at for the plan, but they're very minor tweaks. We go through this every year. Not a year goes by that we don't have to do some maneuvering or negotiation around, you know, tweaking the plan or looking at shopping out, like, the reinsurance or whatever, the stop-loss insurance, things like that. We are looking at offering, we're putting things in the works to hopefully offer a health savings account, HSA option for next year. So I just want to be clear that we're not just sitting back thinking there's nothing we can do, but with something like implementing an HSA, which frankly, I think a lot of our younger employees expect and they're looking for when they come to us, we have great benefits. But we have a very traditional benefit offering that hasn't been changed significantly in a long time. And so we need to strike that balance between preserving the great benefits that we have, but also putting into the mix the, some of the newer tools that are out there. And part of what we're seeing this year with a 10, with a double-digit increase at 10%, it's certainly not the only year we've had a double-digit increase. Sometimes you just have rough years with your experience and utilization, but I feel like part of it this year was, you know, you have two years worth of medical inflation to kick, to, to make up for if nothing else. And even though during COVID, our utilization was down a bit, the medical inflation certainly didn't stop, and is at this point, I think, accelerating. So those are just some of the challenges we're dealing with and some things we don't have control over, but we are doing the best we can with some things proactively that will hopefully help next year. I don't, I'm not naive. I think there would still be an increase next year, but to your point, we've got to, we want to slow that rate of increase.
Ever seen 800,000. Like, I've seen 300,000, I've seen 500,000, but 800,000 is a dramatic increase.
Usually we're in the range of more like a 6% to 7, 8% was on the high end for most years. But you always have to remember now, we're, you know, as we've, with more staff, different things like that factor in too. So it's just something we, we're, we're on it to the extent that we can be. There are things we absolutely cannot control. There are things we can always try to improve. And so, um, thank you for that. Then what was the other thing that you were saying? Oh, about action tonight?
Yeah, I think, to your point, I think, and because we want to notice it and give, if there's an opportunity or, or for city staff, the city manager to meet or, you know, have that opportunity to speak with Dr. Gurley or our staff at all if there are any changes. I think we would look to, to maintain our, our current schedule.
I would just like to reduce the number of school board meetings we have that are just like 20 minutes.
Yeah, I just love seeing you guys. So appreciate all the time and, and the work that everybody has done. I don't know if anybody else has questions about the budget, so I appreciate you bringing that. I don't know if, if anybody wants to get a quick update on, on anything else that's going on. I do, just quickly, we did have a meet, an opportunity to meet and do a tour of Beaufort last Friday. That was Dr. Gurley. It included Mr. Sanders, Ms. Marshall, Ms. Thomas, Counselor Payne, Counselor McGill, Mr. Jordan. We had Mr. Knox from VMDO and Mike Goddard from the city. So it was a great opportunity to walk through Beaufort, allowing them, a couple of the counselors, and even Ms. Marshall and Mr. Sanders, the opportunity to see that campus for the first time. Some things that, that I think I took away with the impact, and Ms. Marshall was astounded at the open campus, at the, the lack of safety there. She's, and also the ADA inaccessibility and challenges there. As a parent who had a child that went through Beaufort, I definitely saw it through different eyes this time, walking and really looking at that building. I definitely saw it through different eyes this time, walking and really looking at that building. I haven't been in there for a while to look at it like that. The inequity as far as some of the classroom sizes, the indoor classes that are used by some of our smaller groups, our ESL groups, the kids who need, you know, with, with special education interventions are in teeny tiny little rooms, no natural light. And it just astounded me as a parent and now as a school board member that at the time I was just struggling to, to make sure that my daughter got what she needed, but I know she was in those little classes. And I didn't even think about it like that. But it was, like I said, it was a great opportunity for the counselors to, to be able to ask some questions. Some of the questions that, that came up towards the end that I think are worthwhile publicly bringing up and sharing with you all was questions about the difference between just renovating Beaufort versus reconfiguring it. And, and, you know, why can't we do something like that as opposed to the whole reconfiguration? And so I think it was worthwhile for them to hear that during part of the public process, the community design groups in the beginning, that was one of the options that VMDO laid out and what that would entail. If we were to just update the current building, to renovate it, it would require moving kids off campus. It would, it would require portable or mobile spaces, and it would require over a million dollars is what I believe Mr. Knox said just for the buildings to house and to, to educate the students and potentially having them off-site for a couple of years while, while the renovation was going on. So that alone, that was an op, or that was one option that was presented, like I said, really early on in the, in the community design and public engagement part of this throughout the summer. And right off, right out of the gates, that was something that the public said, we don't want that. We don't want that for our students. And, and again, I think it's important for the public to hear that the seventy-five million dollars that is being proposed for renovation is, is not pie in the sky. It's not everything we wanted. And actually, everything we wanted, and when it was priced out, was over, I don't even remember, a hundred and some million dollars. And so we really have come down and made cuts and, and, you know, sacrifices in some ways to get to, to the seventy-five million dollars. So it was a great opportunity, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to Principal Jordan for his time and, and leading that tour. And I believe we have another tour scheduled with Mayor Snook. So in a week or two. Also, some other questions that I think that have come up and I think are warrant. There was a lot of talk and has been a lot of talk about looking at, you know, how is reconfiguration going to impact learning? Third grade reading scores, I mean, we were all part of that meeting, you know, and I just want to, for the, the public's sake, I want to make sure that they know that we have prioritized through our budget you know, lots of things that are going to make an impact on our youngest learners. Prioritizing our social, emotional learning and the mental health and the positions within the buildings to do that. As far as the literacy, we have trained, I believe, forty of our educators last year, and I think there's a cohort of about forty-five currently this year in letters. And, and that's a type of literacy instruction and training. So we're investing in, in people who are going to be actually working with our kids to make a difference for those. Another question that often comes up is the per pupil expenditure and how Charlottesville rates so high with that. And actually, I'll let Ms. Powell speak to that if she has some firsthand knowledge and.
Spoken to that one more than a few times. It's actually pretty straightforward. There are two primary reasons that Charlottesville's per pupil expenditure is, is in the, you know, higher part of the state, I believe. I pulled the, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which is the most recent year where their comparison is available because we have to wait for this report to come out from the state in order to compare ourselves with other localities. So we were seventh for nineteen twenty. And the two primary reasons are, first and foremost, operating six small neighborhood-based elementary schools that have around three hundred students or less. I mean, that's a community, that's something that the community values. I don't think there's any desire to change that. And honestly, as affordable housing moves forward and our student population increases, there's a high probability that at least three of those schools would not, we would have to expand on those schools, and they would become more typically sized. But at this point, they are what they're small, community, neighborhood-based elementary schools. And I think the community really appreciates that. Hand in hand with that, but it goes beyond the elementary schools are just simple economies of scale. And that kind of coupled with our depth and breadth of programming. Basically, the smaller the school division, the fewer pupils you have to spread the costs over or to allocate costs to. And yet all school divisions in the Commonwealth have to provide the same basic and essential services and functions for all the students. And this impact of economies of scale is really evident when you look at the PPE for school districts like Surrey, Highland and Bath, which are in the top five in the state. And yet, and I know, I'm sure they're fine school districts, but when you look at them programmatically, you would not necessarily think that they're, they're not offering the depth and breadth of programming we are, and yet they're in the top five. And so that speaks really clearly and loudly to the impact of economies of scale on PPE or per pupil expenditure as a metric. Other factors that, well, for us, you take that economies of scale factor, and you add into that that we're a mid-sized school district, offering a depth and breadth of programming that's on par with much larger school districts. Most school districts our size don't have an orchestra program or some of the other, the, the depth of our fine arts program, especially extending into their middle school and even our upper middle school, or Walker rather, upper elementary. You don't find that in school districts our size or even larger. We have the Avid program, which is a program that's not offered by many school divisions. You have STEM, and then you have preschool, which Charlottesville has been invested in, you know, at a much, with the three-year-old program, you know, much bigger investment, much longer than anyone else. I can't say at this moment, you know, where other school districts stand with, with pre-K, but I know that the Charlottesville investment in three-year-olds has been not typical. So you, you take all of those, that depth and breadth of programming type things, and you couple that with the fact that we're a mid-size or what they call small to mid-size school division. Again, that's fewer students to spread those costs over. Secondary to the six neighborhood elementary schools and the economies of scale factor, there are two other things really, the cost to compete, which that's can be a regional thing. You certainly see that at play in Northern Virginia. But our closest competitor that's literally all around us, Albemarle County, is also in the top twenty for PPE per pupil expense in the state. So there's that factor. And Albemarle has over three times as many students to spread all their costs over. So you take a position like the finance director, Ms. Hoover, or our special ed coordinator, or Leslie Thacker in the Division Administration Office, any of those expenses, they've got over three times more people to spread that cost over. That's huge. Yet we need to be competitive in our offerings with that, you know, as a, as a close, you know, in this area. They're literally all around us, and when it comes to competing for staff and so forth, close to home, I mean, we have no choice but to be competitive or, or our buildings won't be staffed. And then last but not least, student needs and eligibility for grant funds can also be a factor. So you take a locality like Charlottesville where we've consistently ranked among the top as far as diversity with the number of languages we're serving. You look at things like the percentage of disadvantaged students. All of those needs come with additional programming needs and costs associated with that. On the good side, that does make us eligible for more grant funding from state and federal sources. So, but again, that, that's more money in the pot that increases your per pupil expense. And frankly, we could use more to deal from this, from the state and the federal government to address, you know, the special populations. And then also gratefully, we have members of our community who recognize these needs, and there's local grants and local funding that comes to bear that's not from the city. But that money also ends up in our budget and therefore ends up in our per pupil expense calculation. So there are a lot of pieces and parts that result in us being, you know, in the top ten for per pupil expense. And those things just have to be considered, but the, the economies of scale piece cannot be overstated because again, look at who's in the top five. You've got your, you know, Arlington's and Loudoun's and so forth, but you've got Bath, Surrey and Highland County. And no one would say that they're, you know, it's really can become kind of apples and oranges. No one would say that they're inefficient because their, their per pupil costs are high. I would argue that those folks are probably wearing a ton of different hats trying to make it work, but they're not serving as many people, and so they have fewer pupils to spread the cost.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You need to archive that.
I was gonna say, I don't know that they're listening, the right people.
I don't know. It's good for all of us to hear. Good for me to hear it again, so I appreciate that. All right.
Did you mention the neighborhood elementary schools?
I did. That and the economies of scale. And thank you, Ms. McKeever, because you've done a great job of bringing that out whenever this topic comes up. And it's true, it's, it's a consideration, but yet I think there, the community would be up in arms if we ever look to move away from that model. But it's, you know, that's, that would be a community decision.
Yeah, thank you.
I would say please don't ever give away or sell any school properties because we, we need, we need all the land. I can guarantee that.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else? Any other questions, board members? Dr. Kraft, behind me, any questions? Or in front of me? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on, just to announce to everybody that we will see your lovely faces again next Thursday, February twenty-fourth, five PM here, where we will meet to approve the superintendent's proposed budget. We then will have our regularly scheduled Charlottesville City School Board meeting on Thursday, March third. And if there are no questions or further comments, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.